Here.
Mr. Seymour? Yes? Yes. Mr. Lamb is excused this evening. Mr. Frazier is excused this evening. Mr. Cruz?
Present.
Ms. George, here. You have four members present. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is a liquor license request from Great Lakes Colony.
The first item this evening is a request for a transfer of a liquor license from Little Saigon, which was located in Warren, Michigan, to Great Lakes Colony, which is located on Telegraph Road and Nine Mile, or actually at Nine Mile near Telegraph Road. All the necessary paperwork has been submitted to the city and favorable recommendations for this request has been made by the police department, the building department, the treasures department, and we're requesting that council consider approval at your next regular meeting under the consent agenda to approve this request. Is the attorney here?
No, the owner, Mark Tidgell.
Oh, I'm sorry. The owner is present. Does counsel have any questions? I'm sorry, Mark.
Got a great facility over there.
Well, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions, counsel?
No.
I don't know. Triple A was used before. Was it triple A?
It was a triple A building, yeah.
Is this a restaurant or a school?
Pardon me?
Is it a restaurant or a school or both?
It's not a restaurant. It's more of a teaching facility and event center.
I just, I want a question. You invited us to your ribbon cutting and we were back for the West Side Business Breakfast last spring, I think.
Was, yes.
And it's a great facility and I'm sure beer, wine will help you up your business.
So, down in competition for your gender, you can't do gender.
How did TV show go?
Next week.
What's that?
How did TV show go?
The TV show's going good.
Don't you have a house kitchen on that?
House kitchen was a tryout, it was an audition.
Oh, wow.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you so much. This gender is the May 5th overall. Do you want to have some ocean?
Representative Moss and Representative from Michigan, Mississippi, are here to speak about the ballot. Well, I can say that both the press and news have endorsed it. I believe it's vital for the long-term funding of our public work operation. For us, it's about a sustainable, long-term amount and within year three of the proposal, we would actually be able to restore some staff in our public works group and I think that's a, I'd love to see it happen.
Give strictly information.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you, counsel president, honorable counsel, Mr. Mayor. I've been getting probably just as many questions as some of you have been getting about proposal one. It's the road ballot proposal that we will all be voting on, on May the 5th, 2015. I compare this very similarly to the August 2014 personal property tax proposal that we all had questions on. It's the best of a bad situation. It's, there's a lot of realities in Lansing that are going to make this the closest we will get to an adequate road running formula in a long time and for a long time to come. I wanted to provide information to the city council and I'm sure community stakeholders, you'll be asked for your personal opinion on it. Administration needs to know how to best prepare for what will come down to Southfield in terms of state funding. So, I've invited Michigan municipally to prepare a PowerPoint presentation that they've taken from community to community to really explain how this impacts our communities back home. I think the biggest part of this equation is what is the end result for municipal revenue sharing? Because this is probably the biggest stake of the pot that is in flux should this ballot proposal pass, should it not pass. So, I will be happy to answer after this presentation any of the questions of, you know, maybe the political reality in Lansing and the appetite for how this is going to pass. But I'll turn it over to John Lamachia from MML to talk about in specific the details of the proposal, the hard policy numbers.
Thank you, Representative. Before I get started, I would like to just make sure you have some documents in front of you, quite frankly. If you don't mind passing these around. It's one, a copy of my presentation and then two, a earned income tax credit I provided that's a part of this, as well as a letter from former House Speaker Bowler. So, I'm going to kind of stand off to the side here and reference the PowerPoint as I go through this and I think Representative Moss, you know, kind of talked about it very eloquently in terms of this is kind of our one and only opportunity that we have right now. We really believe that at the end. So, I'm going to expand on that a little bit and I'm actually going to touch on some of the political realities that he discussed and some of the things that we see from an organizational perspective potentially coming down the pipeline should this fail. So, just... Is up there. No, I think it's just one thing, maybe. Or if it really don't have to help me out?
Yeah. Thank you. I've never given a presentation of alcohol before, so I've never had any of the liquor.
That's all right. I've given all kinds of presentations on this and all kinds of different things, so they're really... But, you know, kind of quite simply, we tried to, you know, lay out what Prop One is and what it does and we really believe it provides a long-term fix. You know, it's going to require that all of the transportation taxes that you pay for all of your gas tax and registration fees actually have to go to transportation and I'll explain what exactly that means here in a minute. And lawmakers aren't going to be able to shift those dollars somewhere else in the long run. I know that's a big question a lot of our communities ask is, am I really going to get that money that they keep telling you that I'm going to get? And I'm here to tell you, yes, you will and I'll tell you why. Obviously, when do we vote, May 5th, but I think that's important because as an organization, we're advocating for a yes vote, so I'd like to make sure we put that in there. And then what's the impact to our communities? And really, quite frankly, you think there's a tremendous amount of impact when we look at it, both on the road side and the revenue sharing side and it's real money. It's not just with some hocus pocus dollars that are out there and we really believe this is real revenue. So, a little bit of history and I start with 2013, but I want to back up just a little bit further than that and take you back to 1997, which was the last time that they raised gas taxes in the state. They raised it by four cents and they only raised it on gasoline. They did not raise it on diesel. So, we have a 19 cents per gallon gas tax right now, gas, 15 cents on diesel and no inflationary mechanism, which is a big kind of thing to remember there because had we installed an inflationary mechanism at that point, we wouldn't be dealing with the same severity of problems that we are now. So, in 2013, everybody got excited. You know, the governor spoke and said, "We're going to go on, we're going to fix the transportation system." And he talked about doing it in two ways, quite frankly, and that was increasing gas taxes and increasing registration fees. And the gas taxes kind of met with a lukewarm response. Registration fees was dead on the run. Media smart, they labeled it as the birthday tax and people ran with it and it was over really before it got rolling. But, they did introduce some bills, had some conversations, but really nothing serious until we got to 2014 when Speaker Bowler, you know, kind of initiated his first plan, as I'll refer to it, which was about $450 to $500 billion. It reshuffled some existing dollars that were out there. The only new revenue, you heard me talk about the discrepancy between gasoline and diesel, we refer to it as diesel parity, would have made diesel, gas taxes the same as gasoline gas taxes. That's about $50 million in new revenue in this plan. That was the only new revenue in that plan. So, it was really just a reshuffling of current dollars that exist out there. We opposed it, so did many others. June of 2014 is really when this got going because one thing that the speaker was able to do is he was able to get his plan out of the House and he sent it over to Senate and told the Senate, "You know what? If you don't like it, make it better." And that was pretty much his exact words. And so, what the Senate attempted to do was straight raise the gasoline tax and they were going to raise it by a significant amount to bring in about $1.2 to $1.5 billion. But, there were some political problems with that. They tried to get the vote up in June, they could not get it. So, they voted for summer and as we all know in this room, there was an election that was coming up. So, you lost somebody as a result of that election, but that took up the majority of the time between June and, quite frankly, Lake Duck. So, when it didn't happen in June, said, "You know what? This will happen in Lake Duck, we'll figure out what the next steps are." So, the Senate revisited their plan in Lake Duck. They were able to find the votes for that plan and they were able to pass that over to the House, a $1.5 billion tax increase, is quite frankly what it was. And I think what the House said was, "Ooh, I don't think they'd send us that big of a tax increase." And they got a little nervous because now the ball was in their court and so the speaker then came up with his second plan. And really, as we talk about his second plan, that was dead on arrival too. You know, and essentially what happened was if he wanted to eliminate the sales tax at the pump, which they view as a structural problem and there's a lot of ways it is because we pay sales tax at the pump, it doesn't go into our road network, it goes into schools and local government. And so, they wanted to ensure that everybody that was buying gas and the taxes that they paid on gas was actually going into the roads, you know, fairly. But, in order to do that, you know, we as local governments didn't like it because without a guaranteed funding source to replace that, it was a $75 million loss to us. And he said that loss would be made up by growth in sales tax. So, every year, we benefit from some growth in the sales tax. But, as opposed to benefiting from this growth now, we would just be held harmless. Thank you very much for your consideration, okay? I mean, we didn't necessarily like that, but again, so we waited for a couple of weeks. You know, as they kind of batted this around and the decision was made that the legislature wasn't going to be able to handle this as a collective group, so they got what they referred to as the quadrant together. So, it's the two leaders in the House, two leaders in the Senate, plus the governor and they worked to hammer out a proposal. And the proposal that they hammered out is what you see before you today as proposal one. And it came out late in Lake Duck and it was something that kind of caught us all by surprise because even us as an organization had advocated for a fix being done legislation, right? We did not want this to go to a vote for the people. We wanted it done as a simple solution. We thought it was the cleanest way to do it. We thought when we, when you took that next step, it really kind of muddied the waters a little bit. But, to be very honest with you, as the representative spoke, the political realities that happened down there are much different. And to be totally honest, to do a state straight gas tax increase in the House, the votes were not there, right? They weren't there then and they are not there today, okay? And that's the political reality. So, the governor basically said, "Well, either we're going to come up with some plan or no plan." And he is not a no-plan kind of guy. And so, he decided, "We're going to come up with some plan." And so, his plan surrounded around a few different things. Five big keys in that plan. He wanted to make sure that there was new revenue, so not just a reshuffling of revenue, but actual new revenue, that we protected schools, local government, and transit in the state, which wasn't done under the Bowler plan, that those transportation taxes that I mentioned actually go to transportation at the pump, so he wanted to remove that sales tax component, that we keep competitive gas prices at the pump and this is where I usually like to take a minute because everybody's curious, "Well, how much is this proposal going to affect me at the pump?", right? And this is the one place in the PowerPoint that I get to do that. And so, by a result of reducing the sales tax at the pump with no gas tax increase, your gas prices would actually go down. With the gas tax increase then being added back to that proposal, gas prices will go up from today's current level somewhere around six or seven cents, according to M.D. So, gas prices really remain just as consistent or just about the same price they are today. And we know gas prices fluctuate up and down, so you really wouldn't see a significant difference in the actual price of gas that's retained at the pump, but a significant amount more of new revenue would go into the network. And then the final one is providing taxes for low-income individuals across Michigan. That's why I handed out the paper there that is provided by the Michigan League for Public Policy. And I think it's really important to note on this page, you know, if you are a single parent with two kids working minimum wage job, your income's about $15,000, right? With the restoration of the earned income tax to 20% of the federal level, after you pay sales tax and after you pay that increased gas tax, it's actually $608 more in your pocket as a result of that restoration. So, there's some concern about the sales tax being a regressive type tax and I'm not going to disagree with that. It is, right? But, the reason that they added this restoration, the EITC back in there, was to really ensure that we dealt with, you know, those working families at the lowest income thresholds to make sure that they were not harmed in any significant way as a result of this proposal. So, you know, kind of getting into the, really into the nuts and bolts here, there's two separate things. Sometimes people think, "Well, we're going to raise a penny in the sales tax and that's what's going to pay for the roads." That's actually not what's going to pay for the roads. The sales tax increase is to backfill those dollars that happens as a result of exempting sales tax from the pump. You've got about $75 million for local government, like I mentioned, it's about $600 million for schools, so you have to make up for that loss. And the only way to make up for that in a guaranteed format is to go to the ballot and raise the sales tax. The only guaranteed funds that we can have, right? They're going to, as again, as I mentioned, eliminate the sales tax for motor fuel. Couple of changes to the school aid fund and there's a big question, "Well, are we defunding higher ed as a result of this?" That's not, not what's going to happen. Higher ed's going to go back into the general fund where it has been since proposal A passed in 94. When Seider took office, he started to pull down some school aid dollars and dump that into higher education. There was a big kind of point of contention to demonstrate that wasn't what the intention of proposal A was. So, we're actually getting back closer to what the original intention of proposal A was by actually saying now, in this ballot proposal, that higher ed will not be included in the plan. The statutory changes are actually what raise the revenue for roads and that's where once we exempt that sales tax from the pump, we can then increase that tax that's paid on gas. And it's a complicated formula the way they do it and I'm happy to really get into it in detail if you want me to and feel free to ask questions when I'm done. But essentially, what we're going to do is we're going to go from a cents per gallon tax, I mentioned 19 cents per gallon amount, and we're going to charge it on a percentage basis now, actually on the full sale price at the rack at the point of distribution, so not necessarily the pump and quarter sale when you see it right now. So, as a result of that, when we go to percentage base, we're going to increase that percentage and that's going to bring in the $1.22 billion in revenue for roads that we're discussing. Changes to vehicle registrations, because the misnomer out there is that registration fees are going up. The answer is yes and no, okay? So, registration fees are going up on heavy trucks. Registration fees are going up at least $25 on high road vehicles and $50 on 100% electric vehicles. On your average vehicle that everybody drives, day in and day out, registration fees are not going up. What we are doing is we are eliminating the depreciation that happens and what the depreciation is, is each of the first three years you own a new vehicle or a new used vehicle, your registration fee declines by 10%. They're going to eliminate that depreciation. So, nobody's registration fees are actually going up, they're just going to be held flat or if you purchase a new or new used vehicle, they're just going to stay consistent of where they are in the first year. So, it's not an increase in registration fee, it's really what we would refer to as a smoothing of registration fees. And then again, restoration of the earned income tax credit component for this, transportation-related reforms around competitive bidding and warranties and then I always like to remind people that the ballot proposal's still up for approval and may sit halfway through this presentation. Sorry, I can speed it up if you get anxious and want to ask a question. But, the money's the big question, right? And so, we know that a penny increase in the sales tax brings in about $1.34 billion. You don't realize all of that because you lose that money that's collected in sales tax at the, at the pump and since we're exempting that sales tax at the pump, you actually lose that revenue. The statutory changes bring in, you know, $1.2 billion for roads, about $95 million of that is from the registration changes that I had mentioned and the earned income tax credit restoration costs you about $260 million. But, when we increase sales tax, there is a portion of that that is general fund dollars and that's where that's going to be funded out. So, kind of the net impact of this, and I talk about 2017, 2018 because there are some components to this package. In the first two years, we're going to pay down some MDOT debt. And some people question, "Well, why do we want to help MDOT if we pay down their debt?" And I get it. Big question, you know, they should manage things of their own. But, their debts are a result of bonds that were taken out in 1997 under the Engler administration. That was the last time we raised gas tax and they have about $2 billion in debt. We're going to pay off about $1.2 billion of that. That's what's callable in their bond. 800 in the first year, 400 in the second. And everybody goes, "Well, why do we want to do that? Shouldn't that money just go to the roads right away?" There's two reasons why they're not doing that right. The first is because we can gain purchasing, they gain personnel, but we can gain flexibility by paying down that debt. MDOT's annual debt payment right now is $243 million on an annual basis. So, think of it like your credit card, right? Do you want to pay the minimum payment over a long period of time? Probably not because it costs you more. If you can pay more upfront right away, you're going to free up capital on the back end and that's exactly the thought process behind this. The second reason is the workforce, right? So, the question of whether or not the workforce is or isn't there today to handle an infusion of $1.2 billion in debt. And there's some question to that. I think the road industry says, "Yes, we can handle it." There are others that will say, "If we do that, there will be some inflation on those products and you won't get the biggest bang for your buck." So, what you want to do is allow that, the opportunity for that workforce to slowly ramp up helps keep the cost of projects down in the long run. And again, we're fully realizing the biggest savings that we can with the dollars that will be available to us. Comprehensive transportation fund, which is transit, it's going to be about $106 million to the good. School aid fund in that third year, so fully implemented, is up to almost $400 million. Constitutional revenue sharing, which is what we care about, $100 million is probably a pretty conservative estimate, but could be more than that. And then the general fund after we take out the EITC restoration, it's only about $36 million of that really going into the general fund. So, we really think it has an opportunity for a lot of impact. So, again, all or nothing, right? So, we know that it becomes effective October 1st of this year. MDOT will have the ability to do some bonding right away, if there's some short-term bonding right away if this passes and get some projects off the ground right away. Dollars will start to flow into your system and into your community almost immediately. So, your Act 51 payment right now comes in on a monthly basis as we start that October 1st implementation date. That next month is when I'm being told is that first check. You should see the increase. So, all the bills are tie-barred, so if the ballot proposal passes, everything goes away with the exception of one thing, there are some marketplace fairness bills, which is sales tax on internet purchases. It's only about $6 million total, but those are the two bills in all that are not tie-barred and will stay if the ballot proposal fails. No Plan B. Everybody says, "Well, there's always a Plan B, right? There can always be a Plan B. You can always do something different." To a certain extent, yes. So, let's say Plan B is, we're going to go and raise business taxes. Conceptually, it works, right? You can do it. You can submit a bill that's going to raise business tax, but the whole key, this is the political reality, it doesn't have the votes, right? And that's the big difference here. Plans are things that can have votes, wishes are things that don't. So, we can all wish that it would happen, but plans are things that are really achievable. And so, just to give you an example of how short-sighted some of the plans are, Representative Todd Corser reduced his Plan B last week. One of his key components to that plan was completely eliminating statutory revenue sharing. 100% elimination.
He approached me to support it. I said, "No, thank you."
Right? So, when you talk about the types of alternatives that are out there, that's how dire it gets, right? Those are the types of things that people talk about as Plan B and we don't see that, quite frankly, as a viable plan. So, I have, my next slide here is some frequently asked questions. Let me go ahead and, sorry. What's next? We supported it on the 23rd of January, we joined the Safe Go Jet Coalition. We're asking for our communities that we represent their help to get out and do some things, obviously a resolution is one of the key components to that. But, I think the next slide now is the FAQ section. And I would ask you, one that I don't have up here, but I'd just like to kind of challenge you with to think about. If I provided you with a blank piece of paper today and we knew that our road network needed to be improved and you took all the political situations and all the political debate out of this and I said, "You can have a billion to a new road funding, right? You have $100 million more for transit, you have $100 million more for local government, $300 million more for schools, restoration of the earned income tax credit to help our low-income individuals across the state and it's going to cost you a penny and you didn't know anything else." Would you think about it as being a good plan, something that you could think about, get your arms? And I think that answer is yes, personally, right? I mean, that paper, it looks very good, but when you mix all the political stuff with it, you know, people talk about, and I'll get into why the legislature do their job, it confuses things and it complicates things. But, if you actually look at the plan itself, it's solid. I mean, it's, it's real money, it's pretty well thought out and in this day and age, in this legislature and I apologize for presenting it, that's a pretty good achievement, right? That's a pretty good achievement. So, we try to stay alive and tell people, "Don't let the perfect stand in the way of the good." There's not a perfect solution out there on this, there's just not. But, this is a very good solution with nothing but poor solutions following it should it fail. You know, so, is it a special interest money grab? They ask about those other people getting money in this proposal, right? Well, who's the other people getting money? Communities, schools? And I always ask, "Is that a special interest?" I mean, when I turn on the drinking water, I expect it to be clean. You provide that. That's not a special interest service. And I put my kids on the bus and I send them to school and I expect that they receive the best education possible, that's not a special interest. And so, we try to debunk that myth all the time because there are no special interests involved in this. There is nobody else getting rich off of this plan. I mean, it's going to those things, schools, local government and roads. Isn't there enough money in the budget? If you look at it again as one big number, $54 billion, you might think that there is. But, about $44 billion of that is tied up in either direct federal funds or dollars we have to use to draw down the federal funds that cannot be used for other things. We have about $10 billion in discretionary funds, 20% of that is corrections alone and I don't know how many of you are thinking about cutting corrections, but that's not my list personally. You know, and so, you're really debating that number over and over again and you have to find that $1.2 billion you need every single year in cut and that's very, very difficult to do without taking programs that people really care about off the books. So, what are the guarantees, right? And I think this is the big one. What are those guarantees? How do we know that those road dollars are going to go into the road system? How do we know that those sales tax dollars are going to go to schools and local government? And very simply, it's the Constitution. Fortunately for us, we can still stand behind that idea. And very, very specifically in the Constitution, it talks about sales taxes. Where 60% after the two cents goes off the top for Prop One in '94, where it was scheduled for school aid in '94, you have four cents left to deal with. That four cents constitutionally right now says 60% to school, 15% to local government. That is not changing in this ballot proposal. So, you will be guaranteed to get that money, right? To you guys here in Southfield, $640,000 more dollars in constitutional revenue sharing guaranteed to come in. The roads, same thing. The Constitution states that our user fees for our road system, which is gas taxes and registration fees, has to go into our road network, right? Has to do it. And it's distributed by the Act 51 funding formula. That funding formula can change, but you can't change the formula to send money to corrections or to send money to schools. It has to be used on that network because the Constitution says at least 90% of all of that revenue has to be used on Williamson Bridges. The remaining amount can be used on administration or the comprehensive transportation fund, which is transit, right? So, there's a tough key to guarantee that those dollars will go to the roads. Again, for you guys, you get about $5.1 billion right now. At the end of this, you're going to get $8.5 billion. That's three, almost three and a half million more dollars on an annual basis that you will have as revenue from Act 51, right? And that's a significant amount of money. It's roughly a 60% increase in the amount of revenue you'll get. Now, I always look at it, if somebody gave you a 60% rate, pretty good deal, right? It'd probably do a lot of good with that. But, on the back end, if the threat was, "Well, if you don't go out and do this, we're going to look at cutting, right? I'm going to take the risk, I think, a little bit and go out and support what I know is unknown to me versus what is the unknown right now." And I think that's a big key with this. And finally, are we upset at the legislature because they didn't do their job? Sure. No question about it, right?
I wasn't there.
You know, I'm not, I'm not going to hide that. Again, as I mentioned earlier, I mean, we wanted them to do it on their own, right? But, at the end of the day, the votes weren't there and you can't get a plan done without the votes, right? And so, the best thing that they could do is at least provide us with something. And so the best thing that they could do is at least provide us with something. And what they provided us with, is it perfect? I admit it too, that that's not necessarily the case, but is it awful darn good? I think so. And what are the alternatives when we come out, should this fail? And everything that we've talked about, and all of the road numbers, all, says it's not good. And so the last thing that I'll point your attention to is the letter that I gave you from Speaker Bulger. So everybody says, let's go back to the Bulger plan, let's go back to the Bulger plan, right? Well, right in his letter, he tells you that this is our last and best opportunity to get this done. He is fully endorsing it. He sat at that negotiating table, realizing that the limitations of the legislature work, and tried to put forward the best possible plan we could to help our road network, to make sure that we didn't harm schools, to make sure that we didn't harm local government. And he is fully behind this now. He is not standing behind his old proposal, which got labeled as his, which was just an idea that he kind of came up with as an alternative, but it had the votes, so it stayed just that, an idea. But now we have a plan before us, so, you know, with that, I will take some questions. I'm sure the representative would as well. But really wanted to kind of lay it out to you in very stark fashion, quite frankly, with the facts, and what we do and what we think could happen should it fail. And we would encourage you, as a community from our organization standpoint, to please be aligned with us.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Speaker.
How certain are you that you get formulas going to yield three point five million?
Today, very certain. Now, I don't have a perfect crystal ball, but what I can tell you is that should the formula change, there would actually be a direction probably to move more money into areas that have existing to build infrastructure, much like we do here. Part of the reason why it doesn't change is because some of the legislators, particularly on the Transportation Committee, are from more rural areas, and they're trying to protect those dollars right now that come into county system and not have them funneled into areas that are a little different looking than what they are. So I don't see that formula changing in any drastic way. What we hope to have happen is actually have it directed in a different direction. So you may still get the same amount of money, the counties may still get the same amount of money, M.D.O. may still get the same amount of money, but we want the focus of all of those dollars to be on the currently existing built infrastructure, which I think would benefit all of us in this regard.
Hi, Jim.
Hi, I'm Ms. Todd.
Yeah. I don't want to be too, but I wanted to take you to give that presentation, understand it. That's what the big problem is. You can do this a hundred times over, and you're lame, and myself, I can't go through that with you and understand what you're talking about. What happens if gas goes up? The amount of money that people are going to be losing at the pump to spend a bunch of it is going to be reduced. There's a whole series of questions on this. You almost need Pam Maran to do an audit of the things we went through and find out what the bottom line is. But I just, I don't know why they just didn't take and deal with roads, didn't talk about these guys up at the legislature, you know? I thought that's why I turned them off, so they could make hard cold judgments on these things, instead of playing politics with it, you know? I'm not in offense with this, and I'm not even convinced with your presentation to even endorse it, because I really have to go through it and find out why roads are not holding up. I mean, first of all, you got to find out how much money you're going to need to take care of roads. If the roads are going to fall apart every five years, you're never going to have enough money. So there's no money in this for research to find out why, why roads are what they are. You got telegraphed road up north of our city, they're falling apart, you had coal fat, then brand-new concrete, five years old. And people see that, I see that. They're saying, what are they going to do, come back, another five years later, and never come back, and then we have more potholes, more potholes? In other words, I'd rather see something that is firm, amount of money that is firm, whether it be sales tax, whatever that number is to make it smaller, and to have a limitation of what, how many years so people can see what you've done with their money, and if you did well, extend it. But you go through this thing that you just got through trying to understand, there's a lot of things. Like I said, what happens if there's no cap on gas? And you think these wholesale guys are going to sit and be taxed and not pass it on? I mean, what's to stop them from doing that?
Well, they think they get passed on.
I mean, it gets, you know, and I shouldn't say, I'm in the government forty-six years, but I don't trust government. You know, I mean, we just got away from the, oh, I see our sister back there, that, and I love veterans, they don't even want to even think about it, they deserve everything they did and more. But how does the governor, you know, exempt all the veterans from housing exemption? We exempt all their houses now in the city, seventy-nine of them in Southfield, took away our eighty thousand dollars' worth of property tax, exempted, and the rest of it is partially exempted. And they still expect us to look at the state and say, okay, you guys, you're really taking care of us. You know, they take three million from us over here, put three million back over here and say, we're even. And that's what they're doing to us. The threat, the threat of taking away our statutory, you know, and all these threats, it doesn't matter because they're doing it anyway. It's not a threat, they're doing it. Every single day, they're taking our money, every single day. And you're not dealing with roads, you're dealing with politics. So I'm going to do this for you, and then I'll get your vote, and I'll do this for you, and before so diluted that it comes up with this formula, like I said, Pam Maran would have to go through it and tell me what is the bottom line and what's the end that's going to screw up the formula.
Mayor, I think you're absolutely right. I mean, you hit the nail on the head that, you know, I feel like on this proposal, to a degree, we're legislating out of fear, the fear of what happens on May sixth if this ballot proposal doesn't happen. But I would tell you, the reason it's a ballot proposal, obviously, is we're changing the state sales tax. That's in the state constitution, so therefore we have to vote on it. If this plan could have been done legislatively, it probably would have been done legislatively. But there's an aspect to it that requires us as the public to vote on it and change the constitution. I think the legislature should have found a revenue stream that they could have passed, but this perception is that it's now being passed on to us, but constitutionally, we have to vote on it. You know, the reality is, is that, you know, this is a, we are voting to a small degree out of fear of what happens on May sixth. And I can tell you, as John pointed out, they're revising, they're re-pashing that second Bulger plan, which is to strictly eliminate the sales tax on gasoline and implement a wholesale tax without making up for the lost revenue by eliminating the gas sales tax. And that's going to be an absolute direct hit to our communities, and I think that the people who authored that plan don't really care. So after May sixth, should this not pass, we can't cut our way to the one point three, one point five billion dollars that's needed annually to fix our roads, but the party that's in charge will find a way to cut. And we're going to be at the city level, the reapers of that.
Very, but the gas is at its source, about sixty dollars a barrel. It runs up to about a hundred and ten. Do you think these guys are going to sit on that? They're losing their buildings over in Houston, and they're eighteen million, you know, square feet of office buildings go up the head of the fish because it's all oil, and they're losing their shirt. You think they're going to take that for long? They're going to figure a way to get that gas up. And that shows all these formulas that are based on the uses of gasoline up the window. And the other thing is, you know, the roads, you know, this is last year, people really got up and we got a bad frost, and now they feel a pressure to pass something. And I don't think that this thing really addresses roads. You know, three million dollars, we have a ninety-nine million dollar highway pass, you know that? You know, so, what is it, three million? That's three miles, right? Million dollars a mile for three miles of road. So I'm going to go through all of this to have three miles of road stone? Doesn't make sense.
Mayor, I want to also address another concern of yours, which you've had at this table for a while, and that's the warranty, that's the quality of work that's done, and we're sick of seeing cracks in roads.
You guys haven't, not you, but they haven't even, they're negligent in doing warranties. We're going to have a problem out here too. I just see an eighteen-wheeler out here with pipes going down our road, and we have water coming up, we have a frost and a thaw. They still put an eighteen-wheeler on my concrete. So I'm telling you that none of this makes sense to me, because I know what people want. They want roads, passable roads, the power of the roads, both internally in their subdivision as well as the mains. But they're really starting to see that somebody's getting away with something because the roads don't hold up. And so there's no money in research, and that's got to be number one. Why do they saw thirty, thirty feet? So you get thump, 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 thump everywhere you go, you know? And it's been going on and going on and going on, two seventy-five, our own streets, and they just saw that gap over here. You don't think the thaw and freeze is going to make this all go up and down? So anyway, I mean, I just see this, and the person I grew up in the contracting business with my uncles and everybody else, and I see the workmanship, and it's terrible, and nobody cares. And that's why the warranties were sitting there, nobody checks anything, there's nobody inspecting anything. Nobody's throwing that eighteen-wheeler out here and saying, you always screwed up my road out here, you better tear it all up and put it back. And I guess, I guess until you start making some hard decisions and watching, protecting our investment, it's going to continue to get worse. But like I said, I get three million dollars, what did they take off of seven, seventy-nine houses, they took the exemption off, what did they give them, eighty thousand dollars' worth of personal property tax removal? What did they do when they took the balance off of personal property tax? They always suck it off of the guys here to ask our people for more money, all right? And I'm really tired of it, I really am. I really want to see roads fixed so it's very easy. I mean, all you can do it, I'm sure people would do it to like the ninety-nine million dollar bond. You put up a bond, I'm sure they'd probably approve it for ten years, twenty years, thirty years. It's fix roads.
Yeah. I do want to give John the opportunity to talk about the warranty aspect.
How many pages is this bill?
Well, there's actually ten bills in all of it.
Oh, ten bills.
It's a number of pages.
Yeah, that makes it easier. I'm not trying to be, I think everybody just gets picked off about.
You're absolutely right.
I mean, I've been around here so long, see this stuff, this stuff.
Finish with the council question, the name is.
Absolutely. That's true.
Yeah, first of all, I think you did a great presentation. A lot of detail was in your head, bargains my mind. The problem is, you know, people talk about attracting business to Michigan, but they don't seem to recognize that people are allowed to come here, that their employees' cars are damaged, and how do you attract people to care if you don't have roads? This, and it isn't by any means, everything it should be. I totally agree with that, but my concern is, if we don't do this, then we're not going to have anything. And I don't understand, and I remember when we went through the time that all of these roads were going further north and out into the green areas, and we were fighting for money then, and that's been many, many years ago. And it's just kept more new roads out places that don't exist yet. My concern is, and I really believe this, if we don't do this, we're going to have nothing. They don't want to do this. They really don't want to do this. So I'm going to support it, I'm going to vote for it, and I don't think it's the best answer, the final answer, it's not the best answer, but it's probably the only one we're going to have, and it's happening in the immediate future, so.
I just have a question about the vehicle registration fees. You said that you're going to be eliminating the depreciation of those fees, so the registration cost will be the same for the entire time that you hold that vehicle. And just one other thing, what's with the gratitude you mentioned about the higher education funding going over to the general fund? Can you just kind of just explain it in a more time frame?
So I don't know as many details about this part of the content of what we deal with in terms of the local government aspect, but when the Prop 8 passed in ninety-four, the intention was for it to be for K-12 education. And up until really when Dunder Snyder took office, it was being used for that intent of, like, right? And when he took office, he looked at some of that K-12 talent based on his interpretation of the surrounding, that he thought he could, and he put it into higher education business. And really made the Democrats upset because they thought that money was specifically for that sort of purpose. And so really, one of the requests was, as they got into this negotiation, was that if we're going to talk about increasing funding to the school aid fund, which is one of the components to this, we also want that assurance that you're not going to go and take that money and put it into higher education. So they are solidifying in the Constitution that it is for K-12 and not for K-12.
And I want, and probably to your specific question, community colleges are included in the school aid fund and aren't considered higher ed in terms of removing the higher ed back to the general fund. The community colleges are still protected in the school aid fund, though.
To the city attorney and city manager, if there is a benefit, John tells us three point five million, isn't there a way that we can at least let the public know that there is a benefit for Southfield? You're not telling people to vote yes, but you're telling them that the tiers, our road fund and revenue sharing would be increased by three point five million in a year? I think that's an important thing for people to know.
Well, we can educate, and as long as we're not saying, we're encouraging people to vote a certain way, you can educate using public funds to do the education. So if it's all factual, there's not a problem. If the fact is that right, it's going to resolve an additional three point five million for our Act 51 fund, then that's a fact and you're fine with that.
Well, you know, I agree with Don. This whole thing, I was angry about it, it smelled, I've had arguments with Jeremy over it, and I see no choice but to support it, because I don't want to see us lose more revenue. And as Don has said, our ninety-nine million road fund isn't going to do very much, considering that we have two hundred and forty-six miles of local streets. So here is a regular source of money that's going to go on for years if this passes. So it would seem to me it would be in our interest to get the word out that this is the impact that this ballot question will have on Southfield. I think voters need to know that. My only concern is how definite are those figures, and we could get some expert to do the, to draw it out, somebody who knows the proposal better than we do.
So those numbers are not ours, it's from the, we got those from M.D.O. and from the Department of Defense.
Thank you. Well, I just want to, can we do that, Mr. Administrator? Can we have our community relations person?
Absolutely. If there's a consensus that the city's willing to adopt a resolution in favor, we'll prepare an item for the twenty-third and create our own fact sheet. I have consistently heard a sixty percent increase in our Act 51 formulas, which, you know, let me just point out, the ninety-nine million dollar bond gives you a capital source. An additional three, three point four million dollars would give us badly needed dollars for operations. And I have said to my staff, I would, my recommendation would be if that three point four, the first million, would go into operations to better maintain what we have, and then the other two million annually would be structured into some sort of debt relief. And that was one of the things when we did the ninety-nine million bond, we said if there was a proposal passed, we wouldn't levy the full amount of assessment in order to retire the debt. So part of our debt coverage could possibly come from another two million. But if you looked at, if another three million came in, that would allow us to restore, to have more people out doing maintenance, crack sealing, and some of those things to help preserve the life of our roads, it will do well.
Then I'd be willing to move a Rule 10 so that we could give the administration direction to, we're not telling the public how to vote, we're just simply stating the impact of passage of this ballot issue on Southfield. So I'd move a Rule 10 for that.
Can I ask for a question? You want a statement that will, the tribe members will do it well?
Yeah.
And standard recording it or not?
I didn't say we have to. We would produce a fact sheet, but if you go for the bond.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, I'd like to, if I need any more, we'll do a ten, but, yes, definitely. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I need a close.
Then I'd make the same. Then I'd make the same motion, um, to, uh, put out a public statement, a fact sheet, on the, uh, impact of, uh, to make this ballot proposal on Southfield.
Okay, we have a motion, I would like to, uh, put by me, or by the ten, or, um, maybe.
People need to know that.
All in favor?
I know a little bit of town, but you have to.
Uh, go ahead.
Well, go ahead. You're gonna be voting, it won't matter.
Right, go ahead. You can go ahead.
No, it's all right. Go ahead, vote. I'm gonna see it anyway. Well, I'm just gonna say, you know, that, yeah, if you tell individuals to vote here when you show this presentation, you tell them, is it worth all this to get three miles of roadway done in your city? And if you ask that to every community, you'd see that there's no way. Number one, they'd never understand that. They'd never know what the impact it's had on them. And you end up getting on heat. And like I said, with oil down to sixty dollars a barrel is all based on the chemistry of oil. Your gas is not capped. Price of gasoline is not capped. Is that correct?
I'm sorry. Price of gasoline is not capped. The price of gasoline is not capped. The way in which the mechanism operates in this proposal, it says that on a twelve month, uh, basis, the whole surprice, that there's a cap, and it's much like the proposal, where gas prices can go up, and the tax we charge on gas cannot go up by more than inflation or five percent, whichever is less. So just because gas prices go up doesn't mean you're gonna reap a whole ton of new benefits from the gas tax. It's capped, even if gas prices go up, which they could do without this proposal and realize nobody. So there is a mechanism in there to try and protect the public's interest in terms of, uh, the tax actually going up at an extreme high.
But the only way it could be favored to the, to the individual is that for every dollar rate goes up, percentage-wise, it's, your money's reduced. That's the only thing, because, because everything is applied to your cost of gasoline. I mean, but then you throw in all these other things that, that, that filter into the, the formula, you know, that this, this happens, this happens, and this happens, this happens. And, and I guess, and I guess I don't believe that the average resident in this city even with understanding that we stay here for a month. And, and that's what's bad about the piece of legislation. And like I said, it should be, but everybody is saying, "I'm willing to pay for roads. So, so give me money for roads." And, and the way they are presenting it, you know, it's, it's way off the killer. Even if you said, okay, let's try this for ten years or something, something where they could see it happen. And, but the main thing is, there's not been any money for research on how to make our roads stay longer. And that, and that's the biggest crime. There's no money anywhere, federal nor state. That's all.
Once, once again, uh, this is an annual source of revenue. So it's not just, um, uh, three point five million, uh, every.
Ten years, it's about thirty miles.
But it, it was a continuing source of revenue. And, um, our bond is gonna end at one day.
Are you meaning it shouldn't have been building? Once it's happened, that, uh, legislation doesn't go back in and change the formula again?
We'd be adjusting the state constitution, you know, so that would require another vote of the public.
Okay, so once it's happened, that's it.
Yeah.
Won't be any other changes. So, uh, local government will get their pie, the schools will get their pie, and then there'll be a country road.
Right.
The only, the only caveat I will, I will add to that is, local government and schools, absolutely no question. Roads, absolutely no question either. But the vote is a little different scenario, because it's the entire network that we look at when we talk about road distribution. So it's not just what happens in cities and villages, but it's what happens in the county system and what happens, uh, in the state system. And so as a result of that, our formula, it's called Act fifty-one twenty, the formula dictates where those dollars go. Currently, right now, M.D. gets thirty nine point one, counties get thirty nine point one, cities and villages get twenty one twenty. It is conceivable that that could change over time. But in the, in the entire way in which we dealt with the Constitution of guaranteeing user fees going into the system, it's always been separate from the policy in terms of how we spend it, because it has, has to adjust over time. And that's what the formula does, is it allows the flexibility to adjust. So, so I don't wanna give anybody the false impression that there's an absolute one hundred percent guarantee going forward for determent. The guarantee is that those dollars will always remain within the road system. And it's the formula that dictates how it gets spent, much like I said earlier. But the, the will to change the formula is not there in a significant manner where we think, and this was a big part for us as our organization to get behind it, because all of our members are affected by this, because they are all in local road agency. We were not gonna support something that we thought, long-term, would have a negative impact on them, and they would be in jeopardy of losing dollars in any significant way. And we do not see that coming in the future. But there is a certain degree of flexibility that you need to have with those dollars over the course of time to ensure that you can do certain things with them. And that's a key component to this, that allows that formula to continue to kind of be a living entity under the Doc.
So I just want to, of course, would you just say, is it M.D. that's getting the debt paid off?
M.D.
How much are they getting?
Well, over the course of this plan, it would happen over the first two years, it's one point two billion dollars.
Why, why is that happening?
Well, the reason that happens is because right now they have an annual debt payment from bonds that were taken out nineteen ninety-seven, last time they raised gas taxes.
They're taking money with this program.
Yeah, but, but the, the reason they're doing it upfront is because right now there are annual debt payments, which comes off the top, where he has been running this initiative, is two hundred and forty-three million dollars. If we can reduce that a little.
One question, is everything else frozen that legislature could move, such as, could they go ahead and raise registration vehicles?
Well, that ability has always.
Which would be legislative and applicable?
That ability has always been there, so it hypothetically.
So then, or they could come back and, and raise, raise registration fees?
Hypothetically, in the future, that.
So they're not frozen, are they?
But, but our, our questions are closed.
Yeah, I, you know, a part of the problem with this, I think, is that people aren't gonna understand that some of the money, why is it going to schools? Why is it going to this? Shouldn't it just be about roads? And they're gonna, I'm afraid, this is what I hear, is that people are gonna say, "Why are we dealing with schools now? Why are we dealing with this now? It shouldn't be about roads." And I think that sort of muddies the whole picture a lot of voters.
There's no question about that. It makes it more complicated. But I just wanna let you know, one of the things that the public has talked, and let's say that's across the state about, is they're removing the sales tax from the pump, because they do not wanna see taxes that pass the pump not go to roads. That's a big fundamental structural problem. And representatives spoke about this. The second we do that, it creates a hole for schools and local government. And the only way to backfill that money with guaranteed funds is by going to the people and increasing sales tax. So it's not necessary that we're trying to make a complicated, uh, system out of this. We're actually thinking what is very complicated right now, because you have two unique sources of tax on gasoline. And by the sheer fact that you're eliminating one, it actually simplifies the way in which we deal with that tax from the pump. So very clearly, you're.
Well, we understand that. And, but the general public will, I think, I think that's, I, I see that as an obstacle.
Well, I, I think, to be very honest with you, I think that's exactly why I'm here today, because I can't deliver that message. I can deliver it to you as counsel, we're hoping that you as counsel can help spread that message to your residents. And that's really why. Okay, we're gonna wrap it up with Mr. Speaker.
We're gonna vote?
No, we've already given a vote. We're gonna answer that.
Okay, so vote.
We will, the administration will proceed. Uh, as our intent after this conversation to move that, we'll probably move something on cable to help educate people. It was, um.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, the next item on our agenda, repeat it please, presentation available.
Madam President, the items, uh, the next items, three, four, and five, all pertaining to our ninety-nine million dollar ballot initiative from last November, as outlined, um, with city council. We have forty-two, forty-three million dollars in work scheduled for the next three years. This is, uh, version of sections eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Uh, these items will be placed on the March twenty-third consent agenda for council's action. One final comment, that there will also be on the March twenty-third, a, uh, resolution being prepared by Mayor Cantfield that has clawback language, allowing us, um, we're, we're anticipating the bond sale to happen, uh, late, uh, at some point, sometime, possibly March, April, the end of this month. It would be a resolution that would allow us, uh, that we can, uh, would kind of like a clawback, uh, resolution. That would be on the council agenda as well. I'm gonna turn this, uh, presentation over to Lee Schultz, our city acting engineer, and Brett Rondedot with O.H.M., uh, one of our engineers, just talking first.
Hey, can I get a part of my product? He would have to go for me too. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. So, the last time we came before you to give you the, the overview of what our plan's going to be for the next three years of capital projects. And since that time, we've gone out to bid for the first three projects of twenty fifteen. And that's what we will be asking council to take action onto award to our low bidders on next Monday at the regular meeting. Um, what I wanted to go over was this request for qualifications process that we use to streamline eligible bidders. So what the purchasing department did was advertise a request for qualifications for asphalt paving, concrete paving, and water mains. So we did that. We, what they submitted were technical qualifications as well as some financials. And we got seventeen submitted qualification packages. Of those seventeen, thirteen were found to meet all of our pre-qualification requirements. And so as these first three projects were ready to go out for bids, those thirteen contractors were invited to, uh, bid on those jobs. So depending on what the majority of work was. So for section eleven, that was the spot concrete. So the only contractors of those thirteen that were eligible to submit the bids for that one were the contractors that were pre-qualified for concrete pavement. And for that project, we ended up receiving two bids for that particular project. And Lawrence Knight Company was the low bidder in the amount of two million, nine hundred sixty-one thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars and fifteen cents. Once you add on the fifteen percent engineering inspection, testing, and contingencies, the total amount of the project is three million, four hundred five thousand, nine hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. Pretty much covered all of my slides. That was just to go over that RFQ process. The section twelve project, to remind you, is the Meadowvale subdivision. This project is a water main replacement, uh, as well as paving improvement. So in this subdivision, and there are maps attached to each item, Everett Street is going to be a total concrete reconstruction. And the rest of the roads there will be spot concrete repairs, just wherever we have to get into the roadway for the water main work, as well as taking care of any bad sections of concrete on those streets. For that project, we received five bids, the low bid, and we are recommending awards to Superior Excavating. Uh, the low bid amount was two million, five hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents. And with the fifteen percent engineering inspection, testing, contingencies, we've got a total project amount of two million, nine hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. That is being funded out of both water and roads, and funded by our, our bond, that's how, let it fall. Our third project is in section thirteen. This also was driven by our water main replacement needs. Uh, and in this particular area, due to the mature trees that are in this subdivision, the new water mains are actually gonna go under the road. There would have been extensive mature tree removals that would have had to take place and really change the character of this neighborhood. For this particular project, we received this for both asphalt and concrete reconstruction. And we are recommending the reconstruction be done in asphalt. This is a cost savings of over seven hundred sixty thousand dollars. There will still be concrete curving gutters. We'll be replacing drive approaches. All the existing drive approaches in there are concrete, and we'll be replacing those drive approaches with concrete as well. Uh, this, going with asphalt also makes, uh, big improvements to the constructability, and because of the reduce, you don't have the curing time and keeping drivers off of it for as long. So this will be some ease to the construction as well. We received five bids on this project as well. We're recommending the award go to the low bidder in the amount of four million, four thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars. This equals a total project cost of four million, six hundred five thousand, one dollar and thirty-five cents. That was B.I.L. construction.
I have a question.
Is it, is it?
Yes.
Um, I'm trying to remember, in Cranbrook Village, uh, Cambridge Village, do they have, uh, existing curb, or is that just asphalt?
That's existing, it's an existing concrete subdivision with concrete curving gutters.
Okay. All right. I don't know how the residents would feel, but.
This was also, this particular neighborhood was a neighborhood that we had that, um, we were kind of the discoverers of that alkali silica reaction with the concrete. This was one of the first big projects that that was seen in this region of the state. So they had some rough concrete in the times it has been there. Um, you know, looking at the, the overall cost savings, besides just the upfront of a cheaper cost, we were looking at a life cycle. It still does come out to be, um, cheaper over forty years when it comes time to reconstruct. So asphalt gives us a little more flexibility with the mill and overlays, uh, about every ten, fifteen years.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Congress?
There's one.
May I have the time?
All these, uh, I hope that's an interesting question. Are we gonna be inspecting all these jobs?
All of our capital projects get full-time inspections.
From who?
From the design engineer. So these three projects were O.H.M. projects, so O.H.M. will be performing full-time inspections.
So it's gonna be, like, on the, on the same inspections, or when we finish?
Yes, a hundred percent of the time. If the contractors working are inspectors on site.
That's a good. Yeah, I'm blessed. Thank you for bringing the PowerPoint in today to kind of go through the process. Cause oddly enough, I was just in a conversation with someone asking me about that, the specifics of it. And even as I looked through the packet and see the vendors that we were selecting from, it still seems to be like this plain handful of people, uh, groups in there. Can you just talk about how, how is this advertised? And are we making sure that we're carefully writing up that to give a diversity of companies to be considered?
Yeah, purchaser can probably speak to it better than I can, but it's advertised on the Mitten website. And, so we really are only going out and publicly advertising one time. And that was for all these contractors to submit their qualifications. So as the individual projects came up, as they are coming up, and they will continue for the next few months, um, we'll just be sending it to those pre-qualified bidders. And whomever is interested in bidding, they can. Some of the projects are bigger than others, so you might see some contractors, um, not necessarily going after the five million dollar project. They might be waiting for the one million dollar project that would be coming later in the summer. So we tried to keep it open. The contractors did have to have, um, minimum amount of installation of the type of water main that we're installing, um, as well as a minimum amount of, you know, that was for water main, and if there was concrete, they had to have a minimum, um, tonnage of concrete and, as well as asphalt, depending on what they were trying to apply for. We also checked references. Most of the contractors that, um, did not meet the qualifications, it was because they had not had enough experience that we were asking for, um, in the particular field. So it, you know, we, we don't want to lie to that. So, it, you know, we don't want guys that are just starting out and that don't have a lot of experience with these road projects and want them to be experienced in these large sized projects.
Which is an opportunity for them to express their qualifications. Where was this advertised?
That was during the RFQ process that everyone reviewed at the city. We had city staff as well as our consulting engineers from HRC and OHM reviewing the qualifications. But the qualifications were spelled out very clearly when that was advertised, what we were looking for. We also were checking some references. Some of the contractors we found had unfavorable reviews from other local governments, but none of them were disqualified just for that reason. Any of them that had unfavorable reviews were also contractors that were disqualified based on not having enough experience with that particular topic.
I have a question. With the three contractors, the companies that were selected, have we gained prior experience or have we done business with them in the past?
With all three, yes.
All three? They were favorable in questions that the city had in terms of them fulfilling their obligations for quality product?
Yeah, they probably wouldn't have gotten very far in the process if we had had a very bad experience with them previously. So, these are all contractors that the city is comfortable working with.
Now, the work can be done simultaneously or is it going to be done by each particular section at a time?
Yeah, each of these three projects, it's three different contractors, they really, these projects will be running concurrently. So, they're all expected to start in May of this year and really go through the entire construction season until November, until the project's all done. We are keeping the contracts open in case they don't have time to get all the restoration completed this fall, that they would still be able to do some restoration next spring.
Okay, I do agree with the mayor just in terms of inspection and making sure that the job is completed on time because we don't have to come back every day to redo what's been done.
Right, I understand. And because these projects are locally led, we do carry a two-year maintenance guarantee on all of our locally led projects.
And I'm not sure if I read it correctly, how much is spent directly from our road bond and how much has come to water?
For each one, we're proposing that the dollars that come out of roads will be paid for directly from the road bond. So, on our Section 11, the spot concrete project, that will be in the amount of approximately $3 million for that one. For Section 12, which is water main and concrete, we have approximately $870,000 of the road bond. And for Section 13, we have approximately 1.9.
Is there any other questions? All right, thank you very much. And that's for items three, four, and five.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Friends of Southfield Police.
Good evening, Council President, Honorable Body, Mr. Mayor, and city officials and members of the public. I have two items on the agenda tonight. And the first is an informational item regarding a nonprofit organization that will be created by Southfield police officers. And the primary mission of this organization will be to assist police officers, the families of police officers that have been severely injured or killed in the line of duty. And I have Lieutenant Bassett was one of the officers who will be organizing this, creating this organization. Talk a little bit about this organization.
Good afternoon. I'm here to discuss the Friends of Southfield Police. Friends of Southfield Police is being organized for charitable purpose of financially helping needs of sworn police officers, their dependents, and other members of the community during times of tragedy. Friends of Southfield Police will be there primarily to provide financial support for families and the survivors of in-the-line-of-duty deaths and injuries to officers. In addition, officers frequently come into contact with members of the community who have been involved in traumatic loss and could benefit from the support of such an organization. The filing of our articles of incorporation are currently in process with the state of Michigan. Once complete, we will file with the Internal Revenue Service as a 501(c)(3). Sergeant Katie Schneider, Officer Ashley Smith, and I are the founding board members of the Friends of Southfield Police. As defined by the bylaws of the organization, no compensation will be paid to any of the board members. In the future, we look forward to greater participation by community members. We have researched similar organizations in surrounding communities to include Farmington Hills, Farmington, Franklin, Livonia, Novi, and Troy. Those organizations have raised funds through several methods to include charity auctions, raffles, golf, and other sporting events. Our initial goal is to conduct an annual charity event.
Thank you.
We are enthusiastic about the opportunity to establish an organization to support our officers and community in times of tragedy. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you this afternoon, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions? Why is it to go?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item, Chief, you'll take the next one.
Yes, thank you. And the second item is a request for a budget adjustment for the police department. Back in October, I came before the Honorable Body and was authorized to expend funds that we received from Clements. As council recalls, we received a revenue check from Clements for services that they provide to municipalities who are part of that consortium. The revenue check that we received back in October was $113,000 plus. We used that, those dollars per council authorization to fund a number of projects. And I'm happy to say that we came in under budget on those projects, and so now we have a $27,000 surplus from those funds. So, I'm requesting that council authorize a budget adjustment to allow the police department to utilize that $27,000 to fund some critical training needs that we have in the police department. This is something I'm very, very excited about because the council and the community knows there's been this push around the country to increase the training for police officers, to increase leadership training, training that allows police departments to enhance our relationships with the community. If council authorized the police department to utilize that $27,000 surplus, those funds will be used for that purpose. I'm very, very excited, and I ask for council's authorization as well. And I'd be glad to answer any questions about any of the other items that we have for use of those funds.
Yeah, Chief, is there going to be any type of diversity or sensitivity training, de-escalation type stuff as part of this training, or is it just the technical type of things you mentioned earlier?
Yes, absolutely. And that'd be a part of that leadership training that's listed in there. All the leadership training that we send our supervisors to have that component, sensitivity, de-escalation, and diversity type training as well. So, absolutely that'd be a part of it.
All right, Chief, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the authorization to accept the payment.
Madam President, Phil Johns, Homeland Security Officer, will be speaking regarding this item. We'll give you a... This item will be placed on next week's agenda as a present item.
Madam President, Council, Mayor, who was up above, we've been notified by FEMA that we have to improve public assistance funding in full amount for all the flooding. I'm coming to this council to ask for approval for the mayor and city clerk to sign into a grant agreement with the state of Michigan so that we can receive our reimbursement fund. We have to sign into a grant agreement because the funds are distributed to us based on a grant. We've already paid a hundred percent, but we'll be receiving eighty percent back.
This is money that's ready to come our way, you just have to have authorization.
Yes, ma'am. We've already done all the appropriate paperwork, and all we have to do is enter into the agreement to receive our funding.
Any questions? How is this $142,000 distributed?
It's going to be going back into the funds that came out. Came out, and there was a debris removal for the most part from...
Okay, so it's not going to the homeowners?
No, it was two separate sides. That was individual assistance. FEMA dealt directly with the individuals. This is public assistance. It goes, FEMA deals directly with the local government.
So, this is what money we've spent to clean up?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, this is giving them a hard time. Next item on our agenda for this meeting is the audit presentation.
Madam President, Representatives Joe Hefferman and Alicia Davis from Plant Run to present the June 30 of 2014 audit. This item was presented to the council finance committee on March 2nd. Mr. Pierce is passing out the binding copies of the audit.
Well, we only, we don't, we used to make a ton of them and hand them out when people asked for them. Now that they're on the bus, and we really only digitize copies, and very few other people get found copies.
So, with the last item on the agenda, does that mean we can take you all the way to seven o'clock? No? I knew the answer to that. I just, that's about as humorous as I get. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Joe Hefferman of Plant Run. And I took over after Les Holber retired a year ago. I've been with the firm thirty-five years, so not quite as long as Les had been, but I'm getting there in terms of experience. And with me is Alicia Davis. I won't try to pretend that I'm running things. Alicia is, tells me where to be, when to be there, what to say, and I just try not to get her manate. All right. That's right, fine. If I want to survive, that's what I do. So, we just handed out kind of a color, a PowerPoint that we're going to talk through. We're happy to get into more detail, but this is kind of the overview. This is what we went over with a week or two ago with the finance committee. So, we'll go through it at a little bit higher level. Alicia, is there anything you need to do before I get in with?
You know, we have two extra copies. I will put them in the meters or if you want to...
So, on page one of this, we just have a listing of the different deliverables of what should be done. I hand it out to you. There's the audit opinion, the financial statements themselves. The CAFRA is really not our product, it's the work product of your finance department who really does put it together. Not every financial public puts their own financial statements together, so leave it alone. I'd say about ninety percent of the time, it's auditors that are putting them together. But your finance department got into the practice of putting it together themselves, which is a much more appropriate, healthier way of doing it. It takes a lot more expertise, but they've got that expertise and they've been able to put it together. What Plant Run's role is on that is to provide the audit opinion, which we do two things in order to provide an audit opinion. We test a sample of your balances and transactions to make sure that the information in your financial statements is valid, reliable, accurate, et cetera. We don't test everything, we don't look at everything, but just a sample of where there could be more risk or more sensitive balance. And then secondly, we look at your internal controls, that you have good processes and controls in place that should produce good, reliable information. So, based on that, we then give an opinion. And the audit opinion is not an opinion that you're financially healthy or unhealthy, it's an opinion of whether the numbers are reliable, and the numbers will tell you whether you're healthy or not. And we'll get through that at the back half of this. In fact, you had a pretty good year, and we'll go through that. But that's not what results in a good audit opinion. A good audit opinion means the numbers that are being produced are reliable, and that in fact, when you read our audit opinion, is what it's done. The other thing that we have as byproducts of doing that audit would be a report on internal control compliance. And we did have four items that, to bring to your attention, which I'll cover in just a minute. We do have other audit findings and observations, which Alicia's going to take us through with our other comments recommendations in the single audit. On page two, the different pieces of the audit opinion, I won't go through page two in great detail. What's important to you is while it covers these areas, what's management's responsibility, what's audited responsibility, and what are our opinions, it was a unmodified opinion. Some people call that a clean opinion, and what that means is we think that those numbers are reliable in your financial statement. They are presented also in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We did have an endless of matter, very small matters, but we still, whenever there's a change in accounting, we need to bring that to your attention. There were two changes this year, neither of which are, there will be, there will be a big one next year, and we'll talk about that a little bit. A year, June 30 of 2015, there's some new pension standard that will cause you to count, start counting the unfunded pension. But for June 30, 2014, there was a change on the balance sheet that we call the S65 showing deferred outflows of resources. It did not change how you present your budget, your income, your revenues, expenses. So, I don't think it's terribly significant. And then there's additional information on pension, really getting ready for next year at June 30, 2015. And there were some good disclosures. It's really the required supplemental information distributed to pension. We're kind of moved. All right, I'll focus to page three. The planned open timing of the audit, there's three phases of how we do our audit procedures. The first one is kind of the planning and information gathering, then the risk assessment phase, and then the rest of our procedures that took place October through December. The timing this year was better than the prior three years. Back in June 30, 2013 and 2012, for each of those years, the city had missed the December 31st, 2013 and 12 deadline. But this year, we were able to make that deadline on December 31st at 2:00 in the afternoon, and I think we finally got it in. So, it could be better. I'd love to see us structure it yet and be a couple of days or a couple of weeks early, but it was a significant improvement. It's with the, essentially, I would say, it's the reduced staffing and manpower, which has been a ten-year trend with revenues going down. The amount of people in the human finance resources has been down more than twenty percent. That's just made it tougher and tougher. A year ago, we really talked about it, how can we make it better? And it was better. On page four, requirement control, we have four items to bring to your attention, and I'll go through each of those four really pretty briefly because we've already had a really detailed discussion, it was a really good discussion with the finance committee going through each of these. So, I'll go through them once more and allow you to ask additional questions that you might have on your own. So, the first one, and we just put finding number, 2014, meaning the year ended June 30, 2014, finding number one, was talking about having sufficient resources, staffing for people in the accounting and financial reporting function so that you can get the financial statements and the financial information prepared on time and have a cushion to review that information before it's used and passed along. This year was an improvement over prior years, and the city should feel good about that. But it still wasn't quite soon enough to be able to really breathe, we got it done, let's review it. What one person did, let's give you a second-person review. And that's how you find errors or discrepancies, things that were different than last year, shouldn't have been different, would have been really tall. And so, as a result of not having that time, there were some things that as auditors, we did go through that process and found a couple of items. They're all corrected. So, your financial statements, every item we would have found has been changed in your accounting records. And again, that's why you can rely on the financial information. But it would be from a process perspective, it would be much better to be able to do this even sooner than you have so that there's room to kind of stop, we've got it done, let's have a review process so that we can identify things that need to be looked into for. The second item we have here is that the city has a single individual that has the ability to kind of do too many things. When you have the combination of ability to collect cash, initiate wire transfers, post general entries, and prepare bank reconciliation, those four things are a lot of things for one person to do. And that's what you want to do with a good internal control system, is try to have different people involved in any one transaction, have at least two different people getting involved. And when you have one person that can do all four of these things, it doesn't always allow for that to occur. Again, that's the same problem with the first item with the number of staffing in that whole... in that whole finance area declining over a ten-year period. You really have one individual that is both the deputy treasurer and the finance director, and that's, that's what causes me compassion. Item number three that we have here on page four, we transfer money into the Viva as a contribution, and then we use the Viva, choosing, we then pay for retiree healthcare out of the general fund and have the Viva reimburse it as it paid it originally. That process, we noticed both a year ago, June 30, 2013, and June 30, 2014, didn't work the way it would have. And, and literally, we transferred more money out of the Viva than we had paid that particular year, because it was being based on projected budgeting amounts. So that process probably needs to be corrected, even though you might say, who cares, because we transferred money into the Viva that legally wasn't required. So if we took too much out, why is that a problem? But it's one of those technical things. The Viva really is a trust, quite literal, how money should be pulled out is like the thing we wanted to correct form for. And on page five, we have the last of the four items to bring to your attention. And it would be interim financial statements. We really feel strongly that if the city must prepare quarterly, or even more often, maybe even monthly, but at least quarterly financial statements, to be given to city management and the finance committee, potentially the council or the whole, you'd be able to make better informed financial decisions throughout the year, whether there's a need for correction or whatever. The city had a very good year last year, so it's not like the lack of information caused us to overspend or, or, but you just didn't know. And in fact, maybe that's, that's why we're a bold budget, because without the information, maybe you're more cautious. But we think it would really help making better, accurate, informed financial decisions if we had quarterly information. All right. On page six, I'll have Alicia take it over to the next.
Thank you, Joe, and cities, and everyone. So we as auditors are required to inform those charges of governance about the qualitative aspects of accounting affecting your financial statements. And so that's why this is in here, it's required. But on page six, we don't have any exceptions to report this year in this field area. So I'm gonna go ahead and recap that and go on to page seven. Page seven and eight, Joe would have already talked about the implementation of the standard S P sixty-five and S P seventy, since they did show up in our opinion letter also. So again, in the interest of time, we might have just spent a lot of time there, because he's kind of already something to highlight. So I'd like to move on to page nine. Well, page nine summarizes our, it's the biggest estimates that are included in your financial statements. So, you know, when you think of that large CAFRA, some of the numbers in there are vast numbers. How much money do you have in the bank? What do you owe your vendor, et cetera? And other numbers in there are basically sign significant estimates. And so we need to identify those significant estimates on and make you aware of them. And so these four items are what we view as being the most significant estimates, based on significant assumptions that could change going forward. But really, all of them are derived from third-party information that is used to come out of those estimates. We do spend a significant amount of time during our audit looking at those and drawing an opinion that we think they're fair and reasonable estimates, and we're able to use so in each of these areas again this year. You know, as Joe, Joe mentioned before, with everything in this presentation, we would have done through either my eyes at length with council finance. It's not our intention to do it in the interest of time, but if you had questions about any of these, I'd be happy to answer them. So page ten. And so actually, this, this item too is something that we would have talked about. Another required area of communication is any instances where we would have had difficulty in performing our audit in accordance with our original planned scope and timing that we, that we communicated upfront to council. And so the primary area was the filing deadline and a little bit of a race to the finish that Joe has covered. Outside of that, we will not identify any other significant difficulties. Page eleven. Page eleven covers, at the top there, corrections to the city's financial statements that were required and resulted as a part of our audit procedures. So when Joe, Joe talked about internally not really having the time to do the second reviews and make sure everything was caught, that we end up sort of serving in that function. And in doing that, these are the areas where we would have proposed a correction to the city's financial statements. Like Joe said, all of those items were corrected by your team and are now reflected accurately in the financial statements that you received today. But again, we are required to communicate those to you all. On page twelve, it's kind of really the catch-all, but if there was any other issues, this would be our opportunity to share that with you. We really identified none in each area really. So on page thirteen, these are, these are other comments and recommendations that we have identified during the course of our audit. They would not be considered audit findings or significant deficiencies in material witnesses, like the four items that Joe talked about. But they are things that we still think warrant the attention of the city's body. And so we want to bring them to your attention. And many of them come with a recommendation by our team. So the first item is, let me practice my remarks by saying that all of this is spelled out in detail in the letter that we handed to you. So you'll have that for your reference to look at later. But I'll give you an overview of each item. Healthcare cost allocations. We've heard a lot of discussions about, you know, the city having a difficult time managing the strings of those costs, since you are self-funded, meaning you pay based on actual claim. You don't pay like a standard premium. And so that makes budgeting difficult, when you really don't know how those things are gonna come in for such a large group. And so makes budgeting difficult, makes accounting a little more tedious. And so one of our recommendations is to consider using an internal service fund for healthcare costs. And that would make the budgeting, the tracking, the accounting a lot less burdensome on the city. And I actually think that's something that Mr. Dorn is going to be considering going forward. The next item is something that we talked about specifically with management, and it relates to some of the road projects that would have been talked about earlier in the agenda. It specifically related to road projects being funded by the water system. And so our observation is really this. So we suspect that some, actually, we don't suspect, we know that some of the funds being used out of the water and sewer funds will in fact benefit the water and sewer funds. What's not clear to us is if there are excess funds coming out of water and sewer, paying for road projects, that go above and beyond the benefit to the water and sewer funds. So our recommendation is that the city prepares analysis to demonstrate that. So, you know, the dollars, I think the city has a clear understanding of where the dollars are coming from. It's matching that to the actual project work and the fund that's benefiting from it, to ensure that if there are excess funds that aren't yet going to road projects beyond what the water and sewer funds benefit from directly, that A, it would not be coming from user charges, B, that the accounting would be corrected, not exactly right, and C, just kind of an awareness that the city has, you know, in fact, made sure that that's appropriate. So we were able to, that really didn't elevate to a significant issue during our audit this year, because the dollar amounts spent in the year that we were auditing were quite small. Most of the work ran up after June 30, 14, so it wouldn't have affected our audit opinion. That would be different going forward, we suspect, because we, we know that the dollars would be a lot greater. The next item, we talked about this a lot, just a recommendation for a central grant coordinator. And that can, that can be done a lot of different ways, but having some more greater collaboration between the folks that administer the grant, the finance department, and just given the sheer volume of activity and the dollars of activity the city has this year, we think having one person dedicated to that would really get you to where you ultimately want to be with correcting some of the audit issues. And then dealing with new grant reform, which is gonna create a little more administrative work for the city. The next item relates to allocation of costs over different funds, departments, and functions. So there are a lot of central costs that get allocated citywide. That's fine, that's normal, it really happens everywhere. Our recommendations in this area would be as such. One, that we would like to see a better documented basis for how the funds get allocated, to ensure that it's appropriate, that everyone's really paying their fair share. So that's one of our recommendations. We would also like to see improvements in the timeliness and accuracy of allocation, so that when there are significant allocations that need to be done, that they're being done throughout the year, and you're not having big adjustments, you know, several months after the year-end, you know, just so that you can kind of budget and plan for what those costs should be, how you're looking on your own financial statements, and so forth. The next item, budgeting for grant funds, is really small. The state does require that every special revenue fund have a budget, has a budget. Going into the year, it was unanticipated that this fund would have activities. It ended up having a very small amount of expenditures, and so would have required a budget. And if my understanding has been just been corrected, as we're talking today. Quarterly investment reports. Public Act 20 of 1943 requires that the investment officer prepare and provide a quarterly investment report to the governing body. So quarterly, quarterly, point to quarter. Our understanding is that is happening. We were not able to see that what's happening, because it's not formally recognized in the minute. And so that's really our recommendation, that it be formally recognized in the minute, put on the agenda. And so that there is some documentation of that happening. The last item we have talked about, over the past few years, there were three TIPS that were terminated back in 2008 at the city. Two of the three, so all three of them would have had excess captures at the time. Two of the three went ahead and took the excess captures and, and committed them back to the taxing authorities, just to leave them off. The third one has kind of been hanging on to those monies. And so our recommendation is to go ahead and remit those funds back. I believe the city is looking at if there's some alternative reason to be able to use those funds, and there's some legal counsel on that. And so, you know, we'll, I'm sure you'll, Mr. Dorn, you know, make this aware. Do you have any quarterly files? I don't want to stand here before I want to, you should do this, if legally, you get an opinion, you know.
We're actually, last Tuesday, we had a conversation with Miller Canfield.
Is this building, pardon?
Pardon?
Building B?
No, no, these are Keith Salo's old programs. And the question is whether or not they were fully closed out. And, you know, for example, the, the one tip is on Lear, the other one is the old Eight Mile. For example, we've had this concept of telegraph technology corridor. We, I am exploring with Miller Canfield, if they've been terminated, then they need to be closed out. But is there any way they can be reactivated and be used to, to further our economic development efforts? So we're going through a process. I'd like to have, you know, a resolution one way or the other by the end of the fiscal year, is what we talked about with Miller Canfield. And it may be, at the end of the day, there's a substantial amount of money in some of these, that maybe, you know, we finalize activities and just call it a day, or, you know, but whatever we do, I'm sure that our auditors will have a legal opinion on. So.
All right, moving on to page fourteen. So page fourteen summarizes our findings, both on our financial statements, so, you know, they're the four that Joe covered, but also on our single audit, which is the audit of the federal rewards that the city receives in funds in particular here. And so, you know, if we just kind of look at the, the chart here, you can see the number of findings or issues that has declined. So that, that's certainly positive. I think Mr. Dorn would agree that in some of these items, you're probably not where you want to be. And there's a few more you'd like, you can drop off certainly. But you're at least heading in the right direction. So if I could summarize most of the findings, I would say the biggest area for improvement is on the, the financial reporting and accounting side of the grant activity. You know, so the money's being spent on the right thing. There's no issue with that. All allowable costs going to eligible beneficiaries, et cetera. It's really the accounting and reporting that needs to be buttoned down a little bit.
And that's consistent with us not having a question cost. Question cost would normally result in huge debt for unallowable purposes. That's a much more significant issue. So these, it's, let's clean things up a little bit, and, and that's it. All right. I'm gonna move to page sixteen, and I'm gonna pick up the pace a little bit, because I'm watching the clock, and we've taken probably twenty minutes before I start. I'll be careful. On, on page sixteen, we've got a five-year history of the revenues of the general fund. And there's two messages that have been off this. One is it tells us which revenue sources are most important. And we can see property taxes. That, that's the big eight-hundred-pound gorilla, whatever the, property taxes are important. State revenue is also important, but there's, it's a big drop-off. So property taxes, and, and the story of property taxes is still asterisk, and it's kind of hard to see. But essentially, I'm gonna take you through on the next page for a little more detail. But property taxes have really been declining. We increased the military rate back in 2012, so that caused the revenue to, to come up, although the capital value, the tax base itself did continue to decline up until last year. And I'm, gee, I'm hoping July 1 of 2015, we'll, we'll see a tenth of a percent, a twentieth of a percent, a little bit of an increase. So on page seventeen, you can see the two components of that property tax revenue. The three lines are the three types of property, commercial, industrial, residential. And commercial is the orange line. We've seen significant declines from about 1.6 million down to the neighborhood of 1.15 million. The, the residential, which was above that, it started out at the highest, declined even further. And you can see that's gone from what had been in the neighborhood of 1.7, down in the neighborhood of 900,000, a little less than that. So the residential was hurt even more than the, than the commercial. And then down at the bottom, the blue, is the industrial. You do have some, much less, but it has not been as significant. And this is what we've seen throughout Southeast Michigan, is that residential was more severe, but then started coming back up. Now, the increase in residential actually was a little bit uneven. For some of these, it actually started two years ago. For, for South Hill, you can see it's still, it was really just kind of even the last couple of years. Commercial, though, the orange line, all of Southeast Michigan is finding commercial declined a year or two past residential. And because commercial is so significant for us, it started off about the same as residential, that's why South Hill has probably experienced the downturn longer than many other communities. So some of the neighborhoods, neighboring communities, when you look around, you'd say, gosh, a year ago, or even two years ago, started increasing total tax value. Not so much South Hill, because we're more dependent on the, on the commercial sector there. But net, when you put all that together, going forward for 2015 and beyond, we're going to see some small increase, and that will be really good news. Over a twenty-year period, here's what we're going to see, is probably close to inflationary increases. Remember, proposal aid looks on each individual property. So it really can't go up more than, lower or five percent of inflation. So the revenue stream, I'm relatively optimistic on, in terms of increasing by something close to inflation. If this allows, it's maybe half percent less than inflation. Really, the concern, long run, is that the cost structure, which is so dependent on people, and people, the cost of people includes pension, retiree healthcare, that might be hard to keep to just inflationary increase. We'll see. But that's the, that's the big worry that most people have when they look twenty years out for municipal finance in Michigan, is that we think we're now on the path where revenue should start going up by something close to inflation. But the answer is, it's a big old question. Can we keep the cost within inflation, knowing that so much of it is dependent on pension and retiree healthcare? It's an unanswered question. It's, it's the long-term dilemma. On page eighteen, I won't go through in more detail, but this is the history of state trip revenue, that second-largest revenue source. And we can see from 2000 to 2009, how it dropped from 9.3 million down to about 6.9 million, well, actually, the low point, 5.9 million, we know it in 2012. Since then, it's been coming up slowly. And again, I'd expect state trip revenue to probably be increasing close to inflation. The state was taking it during the whole decade of the 2000s to be able to balance their own general fund budget. That was allowed quite honestly by a trick of what proposal aid did to, to the Headley Amendment. The Headley had said forty-eight point nine or six, forty-eight point some percent of the state budget must be spent on local units. And that was meant to protect, so that the state wouldn't take money when it needed it for its own budget. But proposal aid increased the sales tax, replaced property taxes. So that took the forty-eight percent up to about sixty-some percent. So there was lots of room to come back down as the state needed it. And that's what happened, as that this chart shows on page eighteen. The state, in fact, is able to use it. They did the same thing with schools, not quite as badly, but still, that the, they're, they're getting closer to the forty-nine percent. So. But going forward, the state does not have quite the same economic stress, and the legislators certainly seem to understand the importance of state trip revenue more than they did during the 2000s.
All right. I can interject. This would be a good thing for that.
I can interject, this would be a good thing for that information piece on the road numbers as well.
On page 19, we now shift focus to the expenditure side of things. And as you can see, as the revenues were declining over the last five years, the expenditures pretty much, this has been a struggle to keep each type of expenditure in line. And all of them are either flat or declining a little bit, which is what you needed to do. Again, the second thing this chart shows is where are the significant expenditures? And it shows the public safety is really where the vast majority of the resources are going. Page 20 is really a good one for us accountants, but hopefully, instead of looking at the detailed revenues and expenses, the orange and the blue columns are just total revenue, total expense, with the line going across being fund balance. And it really tells a pretty good story. You were able to, as you saw, the orange line had them declining because of the declining tax base. In 2012, 13, 14, you increased the military rate, which you needed to do to try to keep revenues flat, and you were able to take the expenditures and really keep those in check also. The revenues have been more than expenditures for the last three years, and the fund balance line is going up instead of down. So it really is a good news story, and you've been able to maintain your financial health. Page 21 just shows, takes that line that we saw increase for each of the three years, and breaks that fund balance line into this component, so that you can see how much of our fund balance is in a non-spendable form, that's that small blue part at the top, how much, and the rest of it is expendable, but there's, some of it is legally restricted. That's kind of the dark gray shading. And then we have some committed, assigned, and unassigned. So the committed, assigned, and unassigned is all within the purview, honestly, of the council to make spending decisions. Not the restricted, and not the non-spendable, because as the name suggests, it's really legally restricted or it's not even in expendable form. But the other three categories, that's a pretty significant increase over the last couple of years. Page 21 takes the same kind of chart, only instead of just the general fund, it encompasses all of your governmental funds, your major street fund, your local street fund, your grant funds, your life. Takes all of your funds and includes them in here, so that we can see, when you look at the city's total, all governmental activities, it's also increasing a lot more, but it's restricted. It looks very different than when we look at just the general fund, because those major street funds are legally restricted under Act 51 for major roads or local roads, and most of those special revenue funds are also legally restricted. But it is fund balance that can be used for its intended purpose. And it's a good news, good news graph there in 22. All right, last page, page 23, really, I just kind of summarized. What is the story that the financials are telling us? So over the last 10 years, the city has reduced 200 positions, about 25% of the workforce, and that's both good and bad. The good side of that, obviously, is you needed to do that in order to be able to keep your budget in check and not have a structural deficit. I know the bad news side of it, services aren't the same, the 25% fewer people. You can't provide the same services, and I understand that. But you did what you had to do primarily because you were doing a long-term, looking forward, the five-year financial projections. It's really what gave the city the information to be able to say what kinds of changes do we need to make. The second part is really your defined benefit pension plans are better funded than most. You're at 87% funding at June 30, 2014, and that's pretty good relative to the rest of the world. The retiree healthcare is a bit of a concern, you're much less funded on that. But on the pension plans, which as we said earlier, will start to be measured in the financial statement between 30, 2015, you're in a little bit better position than the average municipality. The third bullet, you've developed long-range financial plans. I think it's important to keep doing that periodically. I don't know if that means every year or every three years, but periodically, because I think that's what kept you in good shape, was doing that five-year look ahead, especially when things were starting to toughen, tax values were going down. You've got significant road improvements in process. Those types of capital items haven't just stopped during the last six years, and so you've been able to now issue bonds and plan to go forward on some of those things that really have to happen eventually. You've got a water sewer rate study in process, and when you look, you're in the process of evaluating the facilities, seeing if there's any excess real estate, seeing if you're using, using them efficiently and energy efficiently, et cetera, as you can. So those are all good positives. It really is a good news story, and I'll stop at this point and if there's any additional questions, we'll let you go to your next meeting.
Okay, Council?
I don't know, I just see that. Good report, Walter Dyke.
You mentioned that our pension plans are 87% funded. Is that projected out?
No, it is not. Now, if you looked at page 116 to 117 of your financial statement, you'll see about a six-year history on those. So you can see what, what the trend has been. Well, I take that back, because that's the news, that's the news. Under the old measure, on page 113, you would see the trend. As I said, there was new pension disclosures this year, trying to get us ready for next year, and so that's on page 116, 117. But on 113, the old measures of actual assumed liability, which are pretty close to the new measure, they still are valid to look at as a, as a projection. We can see that the, the regular general employee's return was in 2008 to 2013 would have declined, so that...
Which page are you on?
113. The fifth column, or says funded ratio. And it reads kind of from the bottom up, instead of the top down. So the general employee would have gone from 77.9 to 68.1 percent, and the prior employees would have gone from 107% to 82%. Both of those went up to 85 and 87% on page 161, under the new measures, but that's primarily because it was such a good market. And the numbers that you're looking at here are a year older, and they were on a smooth market basis that was still taking into effect the change from the 2008 market decline.
I think in page 14 of the audit, these are the single audit findings, some of them, it actually shows that we're improving, but we still have some...
Yes, we clearly have fewer findings than prior years. I, I think it's fair to say you'd rather get to zero findings, or at least, you know, fewer than that. And so there's still some room for improvement. But clearly, the city is having fewer findings, not so much.
So to get to zero, how, is your experience?
Honestly, in my experience, a community your size probably shouldn't expect to get to zero. If you want to. But I just think, we do enough audits of cities that are this large, that you're going to see on the basic financial statement, one or two findings most years, and on the single audit, two to four findings.
Like where we see four or eight?
Auditors have a very low threshold. We are required to communicate at a pretty low level so that the governing body can make the decision, is that a little deal or a big deal? What the audit community was told eight years ago is, don't wait till it's a big deal before we inform those who charge the government. Tell us when they're small and let them figure out if they expire, let us, meaning those who charge the government, figure out when they expire. And so it's a low threshold, quite honestly, which is why I make the statement. Usually, a community your size should expect, open county gets findings. And most would say, hey, they're a very well-run community, and they just, they just know it, okay? They're going to get one to three findings every year.
The personnel action you'll be asked to take later on begins to correct the number of these actions. And particularly, I can tell you, we typically sit down with staff as we go through these audits, findings, and you will, one of the things I spoke, I spoke with the director is, you know, basically in-house training. Because a lot of this, these audit findings are accounting reconciliation issues, where I'm not sure staff has been just adequately trained in how to use the system and reporting. We tighten up reporting and the systems through education, I think you'll get it. Because the findings you're finding aren't in the programs. You know, for a couple of years ago, you had one in the Section 8 program, that when we sat down with, well, we ended up creating a checklist that solved that. So we go through it. I think tightening up some of the initial personnel and finance, staff education and training and reporting will start closing these gaps. And that's the, the direction I'm going in, in this action I'll be asking you to take at the end of the next meeting.
I think another item that we would emphasize, we talked about this with management, is dealing with the recurring items that come up year over year, because you're going to have one or two things come up here or there that are not just get a better, you know, overlooked. But we actually think that the federal government is going to start to crack down a little bit more on things that are not being rectified and that keep showing up year over year. And so I would say, you know, if you're going to start somewhere, start with those items, and, you know, we'll worry about the rest later.
I have a question. I'm not quite sure of what this means. On page 13, both for allocation of costs, various funds, and you mentioned documentation of a lot of allocation. But I'm also looking in your letter on page 13, anything like better examples of no money being misspent, it's just not being recorded properly, is that?
So in aggregate, it's being reported properly, but an example would be insurance. So that's a, a share cost or a pool cost that affects everyone, but currently gets paid out of the general fund. And then the general fund will charge back all funds, department, function. Would you want to jump in, Mr. Dorn, if you want to?
Because this is the complaint we hear from a library report in Parks and Rec. And the better we can document our indirect cost recovery, whether it's facilities or accounting, you know, what does it cost to issue a payroll check? What does it cost to pay a vendor? It's that indirect cost, and we previously, it's my understanding, used an entity called Maximus. And that process needs to be reviewed periodically, and how those indirect costs are allocated. And I, I think, over the years, there's been modifications and changes from the original study that we can't substantiate. So that needs to be put under the microscope.
Is this a little tedious, though? I mean, from a bookkeeping standpoint, and can you assess a value on some of these things?
It's a tedious exercise, but there are entities that do it in a very streamlined fashion, and, you know, they put, they quantify the inputs.
As long as there's a basis to support, so for example, when Joe talks about restricted monies, there are some funds that can only be spent to the purpose that particular pond or sewer or road. And so whenever you charge those funds, whether it's for, you know, identifying locost like insurance, or accounting, or IT, you just have to have a considerable basis for it. And that's effectively what the adjustment is.
If I can add, for example, roads, I've said to OHM and HRC, as we've been developing these three-year plans, you need to be able to give me documentation that this is an acceptable standard in how we've allocated this cost to the water. And we didn't always have that, you know? So at a certain point, pre-audit starting, I'll have OHM, our consulting engineers sit down with the auditors, here are the projects, and here's the formula, and here's the standard, and that's what, I hear the auditors are looking for.
Okay. So again, only from my own budget, budgeting experience, in a department, most of your cost is in personnel. So salaries, the insurance, your pension, or whatever other benefits. So is that what we're driving at here, breaking out those costs so that they're, they're assigned to the correct?
I think we're looking at the shared services, the accounting, the facilities, or probably...
Something like that word, the shared cost.
And then the personnel associated with that. We do a tremendous amount of cost accounting for our Act 51, from the equipment and machinery we use to our, our facilities. You know, our facilities people, they give you a time card? 51 buildings, all color-coded, you know? And we've got a very detailed cost on that, but it's that reconciliation that hasn't been done in a number of years. I think that's what, a lot of our model is still tied to larger personnel. There were some adjustments made, so it needs to be reviewed. And I, again, as new personnel comes in, one of the things, you know, we have a software publicity that we haven't fully activated. And there are certain things where there might be some cost savings personnel-wise by simply utilizing the software we already own and are putting information in.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, Council?
Thank you very much for the time, and we're proud to serve the city of Southfield, and sorry you took 45 or 50 minutes of your time, okay?
Because I want to thank, I mean, December 31st, 2:37 PM is when that went in. Alicia was up at 6:00 AM in the morning, texts are coming through, Mr. Pierce is here, and on, they're in and out. Alicia goes out with the flu bug, but Joe gets us to the finish line, and I go home for New Year's. But thank you to Black Man.
Absolutely. All right, we will consider this meeting adjourned, and we'll be back soon.